Fire demonstration plan for tonight, so the instructions are up there. Please, phones switched to silent please. And I apologise for not keeping you waiting at this meeting. Well, you should have seen their happy faces of Easton, they were so pleased with themselves. So, moving on to the main items of business. The minutes of the last meeting have been on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you happy for me to sign them? Thank you. Amy, apologies for absence.
Thank you Chairman, apologies from councillor Tom Martin and councillor Bob Upton.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Thank you Chairman, councillor Paul Follows has declared a non pecuniary interest in item B1, Westbrook Mills, as he's a member of Godhaming Town Council. Beth Hallam-Smith, Development Manager, has declared a pecuniary interest in items B2 and B3 and will leave the chamber while they're considered.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the public or from members?
Thank you Chairman, then receive further.
I know there's no relevant updates to government guidance, so Beth, would you like to go through the performance against government targets, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman. On your update sheet, you'll see that the services performance on the two government targets, that's speed and quality, that we are performing excellently against these. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much. Good news indeed. Right, so we move on to the applications for planning permission this evening. And should site inspection be deemed necessary, they will be held on Monday 11th of March at a time to be agreed. So the first item we're considering is item B1, application reference WA oblique 2018 oblique 1524, and it's Westbrook Mills Borough Road, Godhaming GU72AZ. And it's for the erection of fourth floor roof extensions. And Jessica is going to introduce the application. Jessica.
Thank you Chair. Yep, so this application is for the erection of a fourth floor in the form of a roof extension to the existing buildings one and two, to provide 24 dwellings, including seven affordable, together with alterations to the elevations of buildings one, two and three, with an updated layout of parking and landscaping works. The proposed drawings show an additional 99 dwellings which do not form part of this application, and they have previously been agreed under a prior notification application. So... Oh, there's two updates for this application. The first is in regard to the date detailed in recommendation C of your update sheet. This is to be amended to the 1st of March 2019, I got that wrong. The second relates to the proposed parking, as detailed on page 33 of the agenda report. This is just to clarify that the proposed plans show that 158 parking spaces are proposed as part of this application. The requirements of this application in isolation would be to provide 24 parking spaces. However, in conjunction with the prior approval application, the requirement would be for 123 across the entire site if all dwellings were implemented. Therefore, the proposed provision of 158 spaces would more than satisfy the council's parking standards in regard to this. Cool. So if we move on to the application today. The application is located to the north-east of Westbrook Road, to the north-west of the railway line and to the south-west of the Lammerslands. Godhaming Train Station is situated to the south of the proposed development site. The red line shows, the red line shown on the site plan in front of you denotes the site under consideration at this time. The blue line denotes the wider area associated with the site, which is to provide a SANG. The SANG application is not being considered today and is subject to a separate planning application. In regard to the SANG, it should be noted that this application is still pending consideration. It has been called in to be heard at a further future planning committee. Natural England have provided comments to officers that they are satisfied, in principle, that the SANG proposed on the site would provide sufficient mitigation to nearby protected habitats and to offset the increase of permanent residents created by the development being reported tonight. Further to this, the section 106 agreement that is to be signed in conjunction with this application will ensure that the SANG is resolved to a satisfactory point and agreed by Natural England to a stage where it can be legally binding in both, in its both, sorry, in both its implementation and long-term management. This will be secured prior to the issuing of the decision if the committee resolves to permit the application under recommendation A by members tonight. If the SANG is not approved at subsequent planning committee, a deed of variation would need to be undertaken of the section 106 agreement and a new SANG provision or mitigation measures implemented prior to the first occupation of the proposed dwellings permitted tonight. With regard to the planning application before you this evening, the site edged in red, and the site is edged as red, as shown in red, and currently comprises three existing buildings. Building one occupies the most easily part of the site. Building two is the central, is located in the central area. And building three is to the east, to the west of the site. All buildings are formerly office spaces but have been previously granted prior approval to conversion to 99 dwellings. This is an aerial photograph of the site and shows the moat to the south-west, the railway line to the east, and Godhaming Town Centre is situated further south of the site. Building one is a U shape predominantly brick-built building of three stories with projecting low pitched concrete tile hip roof. This is it, shown as the office as it is now. Building two, and, building two is also a three-storey rectangular shaped building and sit in perpendicular to building one. It is identical in its material and architectural approach to building one. Both buildings are linked to a first floor, up to the first floor, via a monopitch concrete tiled roof. Oh, sorry, that's building three as well there. Building three is a single-storey brick building with a rectangular footprint. The roof has minimal eaves projection with a low pitched concrete tile hip roof. So this is the ground first, second and third floor, which is currently the roof, like the roof floor, which is the one subject to the alterations to actually be provided as a floor. These plans show what also has been permitted under a prior approval application. This is the proposed roof plan. These are the proposed floor plans for building two and the roof plan. These are the proposed additional floors across both buildings, then you can see here where they're linked at first floor. And there's no change to building three, there's no additional floor. The, this planning application seeks alterations to mainly raise the ridge height and the eaves of the existing dual pitched roof and replacement with a mansard roof of buildings one and two, incorporating dormer windows and roof lights, a mansard style roof replacing the existing main concrete tiled roofs. So you can kind of make out here the red dotted line which shows the existing roof line, so here. And then what's shown in yellow is to be amended from the original, above. So you can kind of work that out. So this is building one, building one. There's no change to this little area here. And there will be some changes to the existing first and ground floor areas to provide amenity spaces above. There's also some feature gables implemented. That's another view of building one of the changes from existing and proposed. Yeah, as mentioned, feature gables, locations on buildings one and two, there's a replacement of existing asbestos panels with grey coloured render at second floor level of building one and two, flats around here. There's alterations to external facade of building three, which you can see. This is building two, you can see the link extension here, and they're just going to ratify that with a flat roof above. Building three, there's no kind of alterations apart from to reinstate some windows with updated windows and some cladding. And that's it, there's no other alterations to building three. These are the proposed rendered finishes showing the materials. The roof with the mansard will be a different material to the existing red brick building below, and these are the grey panels here. These are the amenity spaces which are provided with glass balustrades above the first and ground floor projections. Some more renders. This is building two with the linking extension here, which is already there, it's just being re-clad. And these are the refus and recycling stores which are proposed within the site. The recycling store, and these are the cycle stores. The provision of seven affordable dwellings also is incorporated within this scheme. So the determinant issues before you today, the effect on the SPA by biodiversity and compliance with the habitats regulations, and then matters for judgment are design and impact on visual immunity, impact on residential immunity, parking, affordable housing and the housing mix. That's be, any questions? Thanks.
So sorry, could we please go back to the external photos of blocks one and two and showing the previous, the before and after? Before, this came before us, with the 99 dwellings that have been accepted, what was the roof line like? The one we can see? The top one? Right. The one that looks nice as far as I'm concerned. Okay, thank you very much indeed.
Councillor James, is yours a question as well?
Well, it's exactly the same, is, could you tell me, is there a reason why the attractive building with roofs has now got flat concrete everywhere? Building three has got a proper roof, and even the refus and the recycling bin areas have got proper roofs, but for some unknown reason, the two extensions on either side, the first and second floor, have now got flat roofs, and you said glass balustrade, which design-wise ruins the whole thing. And that is my only comment. I presume it's because if there's a pitched roof, the windows of the buildings behind, but on the, on the top white buildings, they've still got windows overlooking the roof. So could you explain why, why they have now removed the proper roofs and put flat roofs? Thank you Chairman.
You're referring to the two sort of projections, are you? Yeah, the two-storey parts, yeah. Okay. Jessica.
Thank you Chair. So if we go to the first part of your question, these areas here where the flat roofs are now proposed instead of the kind of hip roofs, to provide amenity space to the flats which are provided under the permitted development rights on, to the below. So there would be no external amenity space provided to any of the flats. So this is to provide some of them with external amenity space. And the linking extension, just here, it doesn't actually, it doesn't alter it in any way, it just gives a little bit more headroom and provides a flat roof. So you can see here the intersection where it's slightly different, so it just...
Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you very much Chairman. I asked that this planning application come to Godhaming Town Council because it's in my ward, and I've never been happy, in fact, most of us, in fact, I suspect, almost all of us on Godhaming Town Council have been very unhappy over the last few years about these prior notification applications, which sadly we can't do very much about because it's a government scheme brought in, I think probably during the coalition if I remember, a long time ago anyway. And it has seen sadly that in Godhaming we've lost a lot of usable office space because they have been turned into flats. Now, part of the scheme is that you can use this prior notification application if you do nothing to the flat except for internal changes. So if you change anything externally, you have to have a planning application. And obviously, in this scheme, they've got, because they proposed originally to do no changes, they got a prior notification application which meant we could do nothing about it and they could provide 99 flats, although I suspect that they've realised they can't really provide those flats because they've brought in this application, while they're adding some extra flats in the, on the fourth floor, if you look at some of the reasons, they're saying, you know, alterations to building three to facilitate flats. And there's a lot of changes they're making, and I think what they're trying to do here is wrap up an additional application in terms of trying to get a better proposal for the, you know, the permission they already have. And as councillor Follows knows, sometimes when you're trying to convert old office buildings into flats, it simply doesn't work, which is why it has been a shame that a lot of them have happened without having a planning application, which we then get a chance to judge whether it's right or it's wrong, but at least there's that opportunity given to us. So, so my first worry about this application is that they're trying really to do that. They just want a nice application so they can build 127, well, sorry, 123 flats, and they'll obviously make more money. My second point is, as I think my two colleagues have indicated, it's a very ugly design. I mean, it looks like a 50-year-old Russian hospital with a mansard roof which is completely and utterly out of keeping with the rest of it, those horrible, horrible flat roofs which are going to become balconies or amenity space, but i.e. does mean that they can sell those flats for a lot more money. So that I am very unhappy with. My second reason for being unhappy is that in the report it tells us the housing mix does not comply with the Schmar, so they're trying to put the wrong sort of properties there. You know, we'd like to see slightly bigger flats being created so that people who live up in Markway, who are elderly, live in five-bedroom houses, can actually afford to get something near the town where they can walk but has enough space for them, because they don't want to live in a one or two-bedroom poky flat. And on that note, it also says in the report that the size of these flats is, they're too small, they don't fit with the national guidelines. So to that end, I suspect this is overdevelopment because they're putting too many flats in and they're going to be too small. So I'm really not very happy with this at all. There is another issue which is the SANG. Now, I'm the one who's asked that application to come to committee. I won't debate it today because that's for another day, but I think there are issues around that SANG as well. So I'm afraid all in all, I'm really rather unhappy with this application, and I will probably be refusing it unless I hear otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. We'll have to take your word for the Russian hospital look. Councillor Follows.
Thank you very much Chair. I completely agree with councillor Reynolds, even with the Russian hospital, and they, the Russian hospital I've seen in Moscow looked, did look very like that actually. So, and equally, as councillor Reynolds says, I live in one of these sorts of conversions, and it is probably the most dreadful place I've ever had the pleasure of having to rent in. I'm very glad I didn't buy that particular property. I suspect this will share many of the characteristics of that building, which absolutely suffers from the overdevelopment that councillor Reynolds refers to. Equally share the issues regarding the SANG, but won't go into them now, but equally the flood issues that are there with that SANG, I do have some concerns about on this. Environment Agency obviously changed their mind eventually with a condition which has been added, I gather, but I still have some concerns about that. Couple of other things though, could you just confirm for me, on, I think it's the, I think it's back one on the slides, there's a section, a sort of, in the bottom right-hand corner one, the little step white bits there, on the, on my iPad version, it goes blurry when I zoom in far enough. Does that say proposed and existing as the words on there? I'm just curious in the first instance. Even with very, very good resolution on this iPad, I still can't see quite what it says. But I was also just curious what it was in the, in the very first instance. Whatever it is, I'm just curious what it is. So down at the bottom there, the very bottom right-hand corner, there's sort of three white step things on the coloured diagram.
Yep. Yeah, so the top version is an existing and this is a proposed, and it's a section through this part of the building which projects out the U-shaped bit that comes round. Sorry, it wasn't clear.
And some other little bits, can I just confirm that, so the affordable housing numbers would actually be 7.2? You can confirm that the point two as shown in the conclusion but not the rest is a commuted point two that's going to the rest elsewhere? Because it was referred to in the conclusion but not anywhere else? I'm sorry, I'll carry on a sec. Yeah, please.
No, we're not seeking a commuted sum on this site, as, just to, it's probably 7.2 if you worked out the maths, but no, we weren't seeking a commuted sum.
Okay. Is there any reason why we don't seek out the point two? Because as we don't know how much these flats cost, how do we know what point two is that we're turning down? I know it's only point two, but you know, these all add up when we take it across the borough.
So if I can ask, so the, the affordable housing, the original application that came into, sorry, yeah. Oh, no, now I've ruined it. Okay, I'll answer your question, then we'll figure that out. So the, the original application that came in was for, to implement a roof extension to facilitate the implementation of a prior approval for 128 dwellings that we granted. So we weren't actually able at the time to claim for affordable housing, it was more just in, in, it was kind of seen as a benefit to us. So therefore, yeah, we, we weren't at that time able to require them to provide the commuted sum. So, and it's been agreed by Esther, by our housing enable, an officer as well.
The other question I had done on this was on the actual section 106 itself. It doesn't seem to be contributing much other than to bins, and I was just curious as to why, and particularly education. There's an email attached to the objections on the planning portal between Matt Smith and a chap called Paul Druce at Surrey County Council, which refers to mindful of the up to five obligation restriction upon education projects. And I was just wondering if you could explain to me what that is, and effectively why there seems to be almost no 106 contributions from this development of any note? I was just, yeah, why? Thank you.
Yeah. So... If I can answer your question in regard to that. So the, in regard to the up to five pooling, that's in regard to the SIL legislation where we can't pull up to five projects onto one, five contributions onto one project, so that's what that would have alluded to. And in regard to seeking contributions on the site, again, it was done at the beginning in regard to the prior notification for 128 dwellings, there was no uplift on what was already granted on the sites, we were unable to ask for the contribution at that time.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. I have to say I agree entirely with Stephen Reynolds and Paul Follows on this application. I turn to page 31, which, and the last paragraph on the page, where the officer report says, on balance, the proposal although being different in design, bulk and massing to the other buildings within the area would be acceptable and could be accommodated without harm to the character of the area. I have to say I categorically disagree. I think that this is wholly out of keeping with the setting along the Lammerslands. I think the building that is there already is a tad on the big side, but at least it has a certain grace and elegance to it, and the proposition here destroys the elegance that's there and creates a massing and a feeling and an appearance which in my view is wholly unacceptable within the context of the Godhaming area. And for that reason alone, and there are other reasons that have been identified, I will not be supporting the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you Chairman. A question for officers, and then another query. Could they clarify whether the affordable dwellings are of a similar lower or higher quality to the market dwellings? In terms of size, appearance, quality and so on? The second question is, being someone of a simple mind, like my colleague to the right, could you clarify what exactly additional recommendation C actually means? This is on our update sheet. Thank you.
Basically, I think it means that if we don't make a decision tonight and it runs past the 1st of March, then these new dwellings would be liable for SIL.
I still don't quite understand Chairman, if we don't make a decision tonight, in other words, if we reject... There will be no new dwellings.
If we were to defer the, the application for some reason, or, or, yeah, if it had to, if it was refused and they came back with it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Could you answer councillor Bolton's question about the standard of the affordables, please?
Yeah, so the, the affordable housing is a, is a even split between the one and two-bedroom properties in the development, and the plans identify them as being evenly spread and not identifiable as different to the proposed dwellings, the flats throughout. The flats throughout the development vary in size, just due to, because it's retrofitting in existing buildings, so there are some flats which are slightly larger, some that are slightly smaller, but overall, they aren't considered to be kind of very different to the ones proposed.
Councillor Lee.
Thank you Chairman. First of all, thank you to the councillors that have spoken so far. I've got a further understanding than I had before, and that is very helpful. Now, just looking at the first thing that came into my mind seeing those drawings and subsequent ones, not of a hospital but of a prison block, but there again, you know, that's things in the eye of the...
Depends on one's personal experience, I think councillor Lee.
In the eye of the beholder. Now, can I just sort of look at page 30? I think councillor Martin has had a comment on this or something similar. And the third paragraph down, the proposal would therefore not strictly comply with policy AHN3 of the local plan. So I begin to ask myself, well, what on earth have we got policy AHN3 in place when it's not going to be complied with? And the proposed market housing mix would fail to comply with the latest indicative requirements. And then at the end, as such, officers consider that housing mix is on balance acceptable. Well, I'm clearly not an officer because I do not accept that at all. The second point that I have concerns page 32. Even though the national space standards are not yet in local plan part two, I've noticed that applications that we are receiving before us do refer to those space standards. And what I find unacceptable is a statement like, the 24 new units within the extensions would meet the nationally described space standards 2015. Why should I believe that? There's no supporting evidence for that at all. Not even the internal gross area, let alone the dimensions of bedroom spaces. And that particular one is then linked with page 34. And the fourth paragraph down, the proposed dwellings do not all comply with the technical standards and provide the total gross internal floor area of that required for one or two-bedroom dwellings. But the last statement, as such, the proposed dwellings are considered to provide an appropriate internal standard of accommodation. Now, I know why I'm here, is to try and secure decent, the minimum decent standards of accommodation for people to enjoy health and wellbeing. And I've not found anything in here that I can put my conscience behind to sort of say I agree with the recommendation. So I too cannot support this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds, you wish to come back?
Well, only related with a question. Given that it looks like some of this application is to try and make the existing building and the existing permission work better for the applicant, had the whole thing come to us as an application because they wanted to build the extra story and, you know, basically from scratch, 123 homes as a proper application and not as a, as originally a prior notification application? Would we have asked, would we have been asking for more affordable housing and would we have got better section 106 contributions? So I'm assuming we're not getting those because it's a prior, much of it, the 99 houses or flats is, is under the prior notification application, but if the whole lot was one application, one fresh application, would we be getting, asking for more?
Beth, do you wish to respond, or Jessica?
So that's not the application that's in front of us tonight to consider, to make a judgement against? If it was, then we would be judging it on those bases and making contribution requests per SIL requirements.
But it would be highly unlikely, given this is an existing building, and therefore it would be unlikely that it would come in under those, under those circumstances.
Councillor Follows, if you wish to come back.
Yeah, thank you. Very last point, I am slightly concerned about the number of cars coming out of this, not from this application but for the bigger one, so I shall leave that comment. I don't think that that number of cars coming out round the back of the Meath and Westbrook Road is possibly going to be the best scenario, but that's seemingly with the 99. Can I just ask, is it possible, if it's found that there's significant contamination that needs to be remediated, is it possible that there will be a viability assessment to reduce the affordable housing numbers? Because many people do suspect that there will be more contamination on that site than is currently noted in the report. In fact, the environmental health do say that there needs to be further risk assessment to determine that in the, in the officer's report. That's my last comment, I think. Thank you.
Do you wish to respond? Just please.
So it's my understanding that the contamination land is in regard to the prior notification application, this is an extension for a roof, so there would be unlikely. Yeah, it's unlikely and the implementation of the parking spaces and the cycle stores would be surfaced. It wouldn't lead to contamination land issues.
So if I may just comment slightly flippantly, it does seem that the developer has successfully managed to park all really serious questions that we can ask about this because of this prior notification application. Is that correct?
Are the affordable homes in the new build or can they be placed in the, in a pokey little store cupboard in the, in the bottom of the building?
I think it's.
I, I think the question is, will the affordables be part of these new 24 units or could they be allocated to others in the office block? Is that correct? Yeah.
They'd have to be provided in accordance with this application unless they came in to vary that, the layout of the affordable housing throughout the site.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you for allowing me to come back. Whilst unlike the others, I have actually got no problem with raising the roof to get more, get more dwellings, you know, if we're short of housing. And if people want to buy a small flat, that's up to them. I live in a tiny little one, as everybody knows, wouldn't meet any standards by, but I really cannot support the application for those extended bits with the flat roof because if it was prior notification and they're not meant to alter that building that has prior notification, they are altering it because they're taking the roofs off. So that fails, that prior notification bit where you don't do anything, they are. So I'm not going to support it because of those two bits, but I've got no problem with going up into the roof and I've got no problem with it, they're small because they're less expensive than vast luxury flats. And if people want to buy them, they will be buying them. And it's up to the developer, if he thinks he can sell them, he can. So I've got, but I'm not supporting it because of these horrendous flat roofs that I did say earlier does look like a prison. I think Wormsworth Prison is actually more attractive. Thank you.
Beth, you wish to respond? Yes?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to understand that councillor James's queries about the projections are relating to design grounds. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Reynolds.
So it's just one last question, it's just regarding the access, because I'm not very clear, because I know that at the moment, the, the office, most of the access has been via Borough Road. Now, I know there is another access onto Westbrook, which I just don't think has ever been used. It's kind of been used for emergency vehicles or very sparingly used. What access are they proposing? Are they proposing both accesses for this or just the, the, the normal one on Borough Road?
It's just Borough Road.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. And just looking on page 25, at the bottom two, three paragraphs, I see this is within the green belt and the principle of development within the green belt is inappropriate unless it can be demonstrated that there is very special circumstances can be demonstrated. I can't see that these, there are any very special circumstances to this development and it does seem to be inappropriate, so I would have thought it should be refused.
Thank you. Beth, did you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Holder, one of the exceptions to green belt policy is reuse of brownfield land and providing that, and I'll just go to the policy somewhere, it doesn't impact on the openness of the green belt. So it is brownfield land, so it does fit within that. So the judgement is for you as to whether or not it impacts on the openness. I think Jess wants to add something.
Yeah, if I can add something to that. So paragraph in there, MPPF gives weight to the provision of affordable housing in regard to the reuse of brownfield land. So there's a test whether, if there's harm, if it's less than substantial but greater, but has a greater impact, then the affordable housing can sit at the balance in regard to that.
Thank you. I think my main concern with this is, is the overall bulk and massing of it. And the officer's report actually refers to it many times. On page 26, the buildings would be visibly taller compared to the existing built form and would increase in bulk and massing at higher level across the site. As a result, there would be a visual increase of urban development across the site resulting in a reduction in the openness of the green belt. And then further on, they say, the development will provide a density of development akin to the existing context and surrounding area. Well, the surrounding area is mainly green fields and, so I don't understand that. And then moving on to 27, talking about the two buildings that are going up. Building one by 2.2 metres, which will increase the bulk and form of the roof across the entire building. And then building two, 2.5 metres, right, going taller, increase the bulk and form across the roof. And I, I just, I just think it's an ugly building. Okay, all right. Just over eight feet in old money. Okay, right. Members, are you happy that we move on to the recommendation? So recommendation A is that subject to conditions one to three and five to 20 set out in the agenda report and amended condition four as shown on the update sheet, as well as informative one to seven and a legal agreement to secure seven affordable housing units and sang provision within six months from the date of this decision, permission be granted. All those in favour?
None, Chairman.
So recommendation B and C don't really reply, so I, yes, I would like a proposer and second, sorry?
Because there might be extensions, sorry.
Okay, all those against that recommendation.
Just checking.
Sorry, I missed that point, that little step. So I'd like a proposer and seconder, proposed by councillor Reynolds.
The application is rejected.
Seconded by councillor Peter Martin. And could I have some sound planning reasons, please, for the officers to interpret?
I'd actually refer to page 30, it's contravening policy AHN3 and it's of inappropriate design as emphasised by the bulk mass and the flat roofs.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Martin?
Well, I think it's, for me, it's the reverse of what is in the final paragraph on page 31. I, I just disagree with that statement, the bulk and the massing and the other is, is, is out of keeping in my view with the area. I think there is an adverse impact on the green belt in that area. I mean, it's certainly not in line with other buildings in the immediate locale. And I think also we've had some suggestions from my right hand over here that national policy guidelines are not adhered to as well. So I think there are quite a few.
And, and the housing mix is, does not agree to our schmar either.
But I think my, my biggest objection is the mass and the scale of the building and the destruction of, of the building, which has a reasonable elegance today to a building which lacks elegance in the future.
Right, officers, would you like to interpret those, please?
Thank you, Chair. If I can come back on that. I think officers do have some concerns about the, the proposed reasoning relation to AHN3 in terms of the mix. I think that's probably not really deviating from, from the figures enough for us to be able to defend that appeal, but certainly in terms of design, bulk, mass, they are, the planning reasons. Yeah. I, I think not green belt because we sort of determined that, that that's a separate issue, but visual amenity would be.
Well, you, you did comment in the report that it was, would result in a reduction of the openness of the green belt, so can we not use that?
With regard to the green belt, it's a difficult test because the part of the green belt which it relates to is the, if you can just let me turn back, is G of paragraph 145, which allows for kind of redevelopment of previously developed land where it would not cause substantial harm to the openness of the green belt, but where development would reuse previously developed land and contribute to the affordable identified, the identified affordable housing need. I think officers would stay members away from it being substantial harm to the openness of the green belt because there's already an existing building on the site and the alterations are only marginally increasing the roof in height and bulk, therefore it wouldn't be substantial in our view.
Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think really if we stick to this design mass and bulk, which is really what, what is upsetting us, I, I think we'd probably be on safer ground.
Would you agree, officers? Yes, okay. So, members, proposed by councillor Reynolds and seconded by councillor Martin for the reasons of bulk and design, all those in favour of refusing the application?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. And there are no estempts, good. Right, thank you. We move on to, Beth's going to leave us. I would guess he was probably the applicant. So we move on to item B2, which is reference WA 2018, ref 2085, 99 Oxford Ridge, Goddering, GU72NF. Marie, do you want to take this and the next one together? Would that simplify matters or you have to take them individually?
Shall I do them individually, but just a very short presentation?
Yeah.
A short anyway, so.
Yes.
Sorry to bother you, but do we know why there are actually two applications? Is it to help them monetarily and so they can decide which they're going to build or something?
Pass. I, I would, I would imagine that they probably don't know whether they can afford to build single story or two story and the single story would have a pitched roof, whereas if they're only going to build half it and build the upper floor later, it would have a flat roof or something. Ours not to reason why, I think. Marie, would you like to introduce the application?
Thank you. So this is the application for the single story front porch. Here's the location plan, it's within the developed area of Goddering. This is the block plan showing the location of the proposed porch. And you've got the attached neighbour to the north and a detached neighbour to the south. These are photographs showing the existing site. And here are the proposed plans. The porch would be approximately two metres deep, 3.9 metres wide and would have a maximum height of 3.2 metres. Determining issues, matters of principle and technical opinion, effect on the SPA and biodiversity, and matters of judgment, design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity and parking. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Marie. Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Holder.
I was going to say, Chairman, the addition of a porch to this house is exactly the same to every other house in the road and as it stated in page 59. I think this is a no brainer, I don't see why you shouldn't just move on to the next application.
Okay, it, it's before us because the, the agent is married to a member of staff. So, members, are you happy for me to go straight to the recommendation? Which is that subject to conditions one to two and informative one, permission be granted? All those in favour?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Good, thank you, that's passed. Marie, would you like to move on to item B3, WA 2018, 2086 and the same property?
Certainly, Chair. So this is the direction of a two-story front extension. It would be in the same location as the porch. Here are the plans, same, essentially the same width and same depth as the porch with a maximum height of 6.3 metres, so creating a front gable feature. And the determining, determining issues are the same as the previous application. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Are you happy for me to move straight to the recommendation? That subject to conditions one to two and informative one, permission be granted? All those in favour, please?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Jolly good, thank you, members. There are no items, no items to consider and exempt, so that concludes this evening's meeting. Safe journey home.